Motion's been made to move the minutes as presented. All those in favor, that is carried. We will move on to 5.3.1, Town of Three Hills, Neheel County, IDP. Welcome, Barb.
Good morning.
No, it's morning. It's not good.
Yeah, it is a little chilly.
Okay, sorry about that, but now you can continue.
No worries. I'm bringing you the Town of Three Hills and the Neheel County Intermunicipal Development Plan, and we're recommending first reading of bylaw 1810 for this plan and that we move to schedule a public hearing as per section 606 of the Municipal Government Act to be held on February 11th at 10:00 a.m. So again, as you're well aware, amendments to the Municipal Government Act have required that we do these in between. There have been some additions to that legislation, which we'll talk about in the public hearing, but at this point, we do have a draft plan in place, and Three Hills will be holding their public hearing shortly before ours, so. And we have the proposed draft attached.
Alrighty, what's council's wishes?
Counselor King. I'd make the motion that we move first reading of bylaw 1810 for the Town of Three Hills and Neheel County Intermunicipal Development Plan.
Thank you. Motion's been made to move first reading bylaw 1810. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Counselor McGee.
I move to schedule the public hearing as per section 606 of the Municipal Government Act to be held on February 11th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. Motion's been made to schedule a public hearing, February 11th, 10:00 a.m. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Boy, that was quick. We will now move to 5.5.1, Protective Services. Welcome, Deb.
Good morning, Council. I bring to you today some recommendations from the Alberta Solicitor General to change our policies in order to comply with the audit that they did in December. The recommendations by the auditor include the addition of complaints against peace officers. When we changed the bylaw to only be, to be compliant with the MGA, we took out the peace officers, and so now we need to put the peace officers in a policy. So this is taken directly out of that policy. Notebooks are also a suggested policy that they are asking all municipalities to do, and so we've added that. And because the cannabis act is on our peace officer appointment for our Level 1, we also need a policy that states storing, that goes over the storing and disposal of exhibits. So those are all included in red in that policy, and our recommendation is to approve the additions to Policy 820, Public Safety General.
Thanks, Deb. Are there any questions for our Director of Protective Services? So they're going to be carrying around kitty litter now?
Correct.
Yep, that's what I got out of this. Counselor McGee.
I move to approve the additions to Policy 8-20, Public Safety General, as presented.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the additions to Policy 820. There's any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. We will now move to 6.1, Penalty Cancellation Request. Who's taking this one? Mike? Or, oh, Bill is. Sorry, Bill. I did see you there, but I missed you.
Good morning, Counsel Reed. Before you, it was a request by a ratepayer to waive penalties on a payment that was made after the tax due date. As Counsel's well aware, the Municipal Government Act provides levying of penalties. In this case, the tax notices were sent out in early May. We notified all ratepayers through advertisement and in the paper. Unfortunately, some taxpayers don't meet the deadline, and this was the case in this particular request. So penalties were levied. We had communication with the ratepayer. They confirmed that they did receive the information in May and were well aware of the tax due date, however, it was a couple days late. So penalties have been applied. In other than Municipal Government Act, the administration does not have authority to waive penalties, so it's before council for its consideration today.
Thanks, Bill. Are there any questions from council? What's council's wishes? Counselor McGee.
The history of this particular file, has it usually been very prompt, or is this an ongoing issue?
No, this, these particular rolls are generally paid on time, and there was, again, just a slight timing delay in the receiving of the payment after the due date.
Counselor King.
And just for clarification, if I could, so obviously, if they missed the due date, they would have been charged the penalty as of November the 1st. And so the penalties that are noted here, December 1st and January 1st, are penalties on the penalty?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not charging penalty back on the whole tax bill, but just on the penalty that hasn't been paid?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McGee.
I move to deny the request.
Okay, motion's been made. Council deny the request to waive penalties on the rules as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Now move on to 7.1, Council Attendance at FCM. Mr. Hogan.
So this item is before you, as per discussions at the last regular council meeting, and the direction to bring this back, as well as the attached policies. So administration has done that for council's discussion and consideration around if there, if council wishes to make changes to these policies, wishes to keep them status quo, or I guess those are really the two. I was going to say in-between, but really those are the two options, if you're looking at changes, or if the current method of how we do this is to council satisfaction and leaving it the same. But really, it's here based on a member of council bringing this forward, and it's here for your consideration and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. What's council's wishes here? Counselor King.
I guess, at this point, I find I'm at a bit of a point where I have a problem, because the counselor who had the concern with this particular issue is not here to discuss it with us, nor is he here to present the information that he felt is important for us to consider. Personally, I'm in favor of us participating in FCM. I'm in favor of us continuing to go to these meetings. So I just find we're kind of in an awkward spot, because the individual who raised this issue and has concerns with it is not present to be able to discuss it with us. So I guess I find this a little difficult at this point.
Well, I'm with you on your thoughts, Counselor King. I do believe that FCM, as per any convention that we attend, that we are supposedly, well, supposedly, we are there to learn, to be part of the group, and to get a heads up on what's coming forward towards us. I think it's important that we attend these, but again, like you stated, the counselor is not here that wanted to change this. Is there any other comments? Is Counsel Christie?
I guess my comment. My comment would be that I find it terribly important that we represent our constituents at both provincial and federal conventions, especially when we have no other representation in the east, both federally and east coast. And I've had some really good dialogue with Quebec and eastern counselors behind the scenes that wouldn't happen if we're not there.
Mr. Hogan.
Just as a note, depending on council's wishes on this, if there, if council is of a mind that there's no changes needed, you can proceed with that. You do have the option to defer this to later in the meeting as well, should you want to, or should you feel that there's merit to that?
Is there any interest to table this till later on in the meeting? Or was somebody looking to make a motion? Totally up to council, whatever. Counselor King.
I guess, from the point of view of allowing the opposing viewpoint to be entered into the dialogue, might be worthwhile allowing this item to be tabled for, you know, a period of time. We're not sure whether the counselor in question is going to be able to make it or not. I know he has intent to be here, but whether he's actually going to be able to be here or not, I don't know. So would it be appropriate to suggest we table it till after the public hearing if council as a whole is in agreement? I just find it very hard to have a fruitful discussion about it when the, you know, the opposite opinion is not here, and we can't hear the rationale for why we might want to change our thoughts on this, so. That'd be my suggestion, if council is open to that. I'd be interested in knowing. So perhaps I'll make the tabling motion to defer this in our agenda to after the public hearing regarding the Wheatland-Neheel IDP. And if council agrees with me, they'll vote in that direction, so that'd be my motion, I guess.
Okay, there's been a motion made to table this until after the public hearing. There is no discussion on a tabling motion. I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, so we will bring it back later in the meeting. We will now move on to 8.1, IDP, Mountain View County. Mr. Hogan.
These motions, there's a series of them here in front of you, the next three items that are all relatively similar, or actually are similar. And the recommended motion, the council approved that in accordance with amendments to the MGA, the Neheel County Council agrees it is not necessary at this time to adopt an intermunicipal development plan with Mountain View County. The next two items are the same, just different of our neighbors. This, of course, is something that years ago, when it was legislated that municipalities needed intermunicipal collaboration frameworks and intermunicipal development plans with their neighbors, conducted, putting one of these plans in place was mandatory and was mandated by the province. Under recent changes to Bill 25, which is the Red Tape Reduction Act, the mandatory nature of intermunicipal development plans has disappeared. So the way that it works now is that if both parties agree that an IDP is not needed, then one isn't needed. If one of the parties thinks it's needed, then it becomes a mandatory document that you have to do. So what we're proposing in discussions with the, with some of our neighbors is that, you know, we don't see the need as to, we don't see the need for an intermunicipal development plan. If council feels the same way, then we require a motion to be in compliance with the act. Once the other municipality passes the same motion, then we've met the legislative requirements for those municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. What's council's wishes here? Counselor McGee.
I move to approve that in accordance with the amendments to the MGA, section 631, through Bill 25, that Neheel County Council agrees it is not necessary at this time to adopt an intermunicipal development plan with Mountain View County.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Motion's been made as it's printed. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor King.
I just have a question for our CAO, I guess. So we've had some conversations with Mountain View, and they're of the same opinion as we are, I assume, and feel there's really not a big need to have an IDP between us?
That's correct, and that's the same with all the three items that are on in this regard. We've had conversations with all of those municipalities in terms of whether this was a necessary function for us or not.
Just as a follow-up, it makes a lot of sense for me for Starland and Stettler, just because of the boundary that we have with them, and I just, I was curious as to why Wheatland and us, and it certainly saves us a lot of work. I'm not saying we should do the work if there's no need for it, so.
Yeah, and we found with the intermunicipal development plans and the intermunicipal collaboration frameworks, there's a lot of things that go on near the borders that are not of concern to either party. You know, most of the zonings and everything around there are mostly agriculture, so those functions are fine with both municipalities. So we do find there are ones, even the ICF with Mountain View, is a relatively simple document, because there's not a lot of transition between the two municipalities on that border.
Counselor Keever.
Is it going to have any bearing by us not having this? Like, remember when the water line went in, there was people in the county that wanted us to extend the water line into the county, and we said no way we were going across the county line. Without this, is that going to change anything on that?
No, those decisions, through you, Mr. Reed, those decisions are still made at the date and by council. So if there was ever an instance where we were going to run a piece of infrastructure, nothing prohibits us from having that conversation with Wheatland County.
Mountain View.
Or Mountain View, sorry. Yeah. Or, yeah, or whomever is even the better way. So any project that we do like that, we can always choose to engage.
I guess just as a follow-up, we didn't have an issue with running water. It was the other county that had the issue, saying, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion before us. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. We will move on to 8.2, which is the exact same thing with Starland County. And as Mr. Hogan has previously stated, it's the same thing we just dealt with. So what's council's wishes here? Counselor McGee.
I move to repeat as written, typed out.
Okay, as presented?
Yes, that's what I mean to say. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion before us as presented on the screen. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously also. We will now go on to 8.3, IDP with Stettler County. What is council's wishes here? Oh, Counselor Christie?
I'll move as presented on the county of Stettler, because the border's so big.
A whole three-quarters of a mile. Alrighty, we have a motion as presented, not necessary to adopt an IDP with Stettler County. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We will now move on to 8.4, County Council Appointees Reimbursement. Mr. Hogan.
This item before you is a recommended policy update from administration, and what it's come up is part of the ongoing policy review, and looking at something that hasn't been looked at in some time. And we've reviewed this, and we're recommending that we remove the Assessment Review Board from council appointees list as we contract this service out, so that board is no longer existing, and that we, that the rate adjusted annually by the September Alberta Consumer Price Index instead of the October price, this would align with council reimbursement policy 319. So we currently have one policy that says use this month for this function, and then another one that says use that same measurement, but use this month for that other function. We're just saying, let's use the same month for both. And removed reference to any other member-at-large listed on policy 33, and as we'll be bringing that particular policy back to council and recommending that it be rescinded. So it's just a bit of an advance alignment feature.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Are there any questions for Mr. Hogan? Anyone care to present a motion? Counselor King.
I'd make the motion that we approve policy 3-19-3, Council's Appointees Reimbursement as presented.
Thank you. Is there any, we have a motion to approve policy 3-19-3. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that was carried unanimously. We will now move on to 8.5, Alberta First Resolution. Mr. Hogan.
This item, again, was put forward by a member of council for council's consideration. It's regarding the Alberta First Resolution that Wheatland County has recently approved. The, sorry, Wheatland County's looking at this resolution as something that they want to drive through the RMA resolution process. So they're looking for two things. I think formally, they're looking for one thing down the road, they'll probably be looking for a different, for another, is they're just looking for other municipalities to join the lobby effort, I guess would be the way to phrase it, and to support this idea or this motion. Down the road, I would expect that they'd be looking for a seconder for this motion when it does make it into the RMA resolution process. So they're not formally looking for a seconder today, but they are looking for other municipalities to pass the same motion and to support. At their meeting on December 17th, they debated this motion. Previous to that, they had approved it in principle, but had not formally endorsed it as a council. They discussed this at their December 17th regular council meeting. It was a recorded vote, and it was supported on a 4-3 basis. So there is a, they have formally approved it now. The change in that formal approval is under the final clause, where it's further be it resolved, and it's causing for, basically stating that if these things are not dealt with, that Alberta exercise a referendum with a clear question around cessation. In their approved motion, that further be it resolved clause was removed. So the one that's being put forward is the amended version, so it's the Alberta First Resolution without the cessation clause.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Is there any questions for Mr. Hogan? Is there any discussion? I think this resolution goes beyond what our jurisdiction is. This is federal and provincial discussions, this isn't municipal discussions. But that's my thoughts on it. Counselor McGee.
I agree with you 100%. I don't think it's ours to decide how that should go if they don't deal with it. I also don't think that we as a county would benefit from making this the only thing that we keep our relationship over. This is quite a relationship-defining statement, and I'm not willing to make such a clear one-way statement.
Counselor Keever.
I would like to move that we opt to decline support for the resolution.
Okay, motion's been made that we do not support the resolution. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor Christie?
I guess I'd support part of it, but not all of it, so I guess I'd have to say no.
Is there any other discussion to this motion? Counselor King.
You know, I sympathize with the thought process that's involved. I think it's really outside of our jurisdiction to weigh in on some of these matters. I think we can express our own personal opinions on how we feel about Alberta's place in Canada, but I would have a hard time supporting this as well, so certainly, I think that it's important that we be open to hearing what our ratepayers have to say and to hear them, but it's also important for us to be able to respond back to them and say there are appropriate forums for this kind of discussion. I don't know necessarily that this is the right forum, so.
And I would agree with you, Counselor King. I think our residents have the opportunity to contact their MP, their MLA, and put their position forward. That is where the position's going to come from, so I really don't see much point in we as county getting mixed up in a, in a, okay, I can't figure out a good way to say this, but I don't want to get mixed up in this fight. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Keever.
We as a county don't have a vote on the matter anyways. It's just individuals that have the vote, so why would we be there?
Is there any other discussion to this motion? Seeing's none, we do have a motion before us. Is that the motion that you would like as presented on the screen? Counselor Keever moved the council opt to decline support to the Alberta First Resolution. Is that correct? Yep. Okay. If there's no more discussion, I will call the question. Going, going, okay, it's gone. We have a motion before us to decline support. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, we will now move on to 8.6, Communications Reports, A Year in Review. And welcome, Christine.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. So I have for you today a 2019 communications report. During the strategic planning session in February of 2019, Neheel County Council identified ensuring communications and engagement as one of five strategic priorities. Council is committed to open and accountable decision-making, which includes appropriate levels of communication and consultation between council and the public. Communicating with residents is a key function of the county involving elected officials and employees at all levels. The following presentation will outline for council the steps taken, some of the steps taken in 2019 to facilitate communication and engagement with Neheel County residents and ratepayers, and the approach communications will take in 2020 to continue supporting this strategic priority. So 2019 communications, a year in review. In 2019, we hosted two Discovery Fair Open Houses, one in Troschu and one in Acme. Both of these events provided opportunity for citizens to have conversation and dialogue with members of with members of council and Neheal County staff and provided access to financial records, a breakdown of correlated operations, and more information on Neheal County services and policies. As well, we held public consultation as part of twenty nineteen's rebranding process, empowering Neheal County residents and ratepayers to choose the new logo. In twenty nineteen, we also refreshed our website. It was updated to a more user-friendly version, introducing new features and modules that allowed for easier navigation of the site and reliable access to information such as Neheal County's financial reports, budgets, operations, and projects. In twenty nineteen, for council meeting communications, the meeting agendas and corresponding information package for each council meeting are available on the website for public viewing the week prior to the meeting. Council meetings are all livestreamed and available for residents to watch on Neheal County's YouTube channel. The link to the livestream is published on our website and on our social media before eight thirty AM the morning of every meeting. Each council decision is posted on Neheal County's Twitter and Facebook pages as they take place during the meeting. Following the council meeting, the livestream video is saved as a webcast and the video is timestamped to correspond with the council meeting agenda, allowing interested residents to easily access portions of the meeting based on the agenda item. Council notes, a brief summary of the council meeting, including all council decisions, is published on the Neheal County website following each meeting. The council notes also include a timestamp corresponding to the agenda item as it happened during the meeting livestream for easy reference and viewing of each item. So going forward into twenty twenty, communications will inform, engage, and promote. Communications will continue to use various methods and platforms to reach targeted audience, keep residents informed by providing consistent access to accurate information, seek opportunities to engage with Neheal County residents, and celebrate and promote Neheal County successes. By continuing to implement communications plans for Neheal County projects, services, council decisions, and initiatives in twenty twenty will help us to aid in effective, efficient communications. For example, the Neheal County capital and operating budget, once it's passed, will have a communications plan to correlate with it. Another Discovery Fair is budgeted for twenty twenty, providing opportunity for open dialogue between Neheal County council, staff, residents, and ratepayers. And as well, we have another website update, just an agenda center, which is a new module that organizes council meeting agendas, packages, minutes, and livestream links on one page of the website, which provides easier access to the information. And that's it. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Christine. Council, have any questions for Christine? By the way, you're doing a really good job.
Oh, thank you.
It's great to see this being pushed ahead and keeping our residents informed of all of our decisions. Are there any questions? Yes, Councillor King?
I know it's so much a question as a comment, and Christine has heard me say this before. One of the things that I I felt that happened around our Discovery Fairs this year is we we need to communicate maybe more clearly with our ratepayers that this is their opportunity, much like the old ratepayer meetings. And I had a bit of a conversation with Christine and when we were sitting down talking about my ratepayer meeting in in Huxley. And I think that we we somehow need to communicate the message to our ratepayers that this is their opportunity to engage with us, much like those old ratepayer meetings were, just in a much nicer and friendlier format, I think, and a much, much easier format to facilitate the communication that we want to have with people. So I think the directions that we've gone with communication have been great. And like Reeve Whitstock, I I really appreciate the efforts that you've made and the ongoing efforts that are happening. We just need some little tweaks to our communication messages, right?
Yes, yeah, through the Reeve, I agree. I would really like to encourage all Neheal County residents to come out to these Discovery Fairs. I think they're very valuable. Yeah.
Well, Discovery Fair ratepayer meeting, same thing, just a different wording. So and it's great to see most, well, all of staff is pretty much attending. The the department heads are attending these meetings and they have the expertise and the knowledge to transmit that information to the ratepayers if any ratepayers interested and are willing to ask that question, so. Sounds great. What's any other discussion, questions for Christine? Councillor Christie?
My only comment is, it's well done. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Councillor Keever?
I think we're at the point where we definitely do not need a full-blown ratepayers meeting anymore. They can find out all the stuff they need to know without going to a meeting. And every time we've had a meeting, I can name you the six people that are going to be there. So I'm sure they're fully informed already.
Councillor King?
Just as a follow-up and I guess to clarify what I was saying earlier, is really I see this Discovery Forum as the ratepayer meeting. And when you think about the amount of information that we had, both in Troschu and in Acme, available for our ratepayers to view, as well as people outside of our ratepayer community, it's far beyond any information that I've ever seen at a ratepayer meeting in the old format, where, you know, council sat at the front and the ratepayers sat as in the classroom, so to speak, and there was question and answer period. The opportunity to ask questions in our Discovery Forums is way greater than any opportunity provided at the previous format for a ratepayer meeting. I'm a hundred percent behind the direction we're taking. And I think we just need to help our own ratepayers to understand that this is that opportunity. All the councillors are there, department heads are there, CAO is there, they have access to whatever information that they might want, and it's available to them in that format. I think it's a great new development for us, and I'm a hundred percent in support of that. It's just how we communicate what's available to them there, so.
Absolutely.
Again, I'm I'm very thankful for the direction that you're taking, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Councillor McGee?
I'd like to to just put in my plug of thank you, I agree. You're great in the right direction. I also would like to reinforce that never before have I seen such easy access to information in many different formats. So if this particular format didn't work, there's another format. And of course, I know all of you are open to phone calls and conversation anyway, so I just am very excited to be part of a council that is so approachable. And I request our residents to remember that and use the many tools that we are creating here. And thanks again for being such a big part of that.
Councillor McGee?
I move to to receive this wonderful report as information. Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the communications report for information as it's presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, we'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is opposed? It's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Our next agenda item, eight point seven, Clearwater County invites to the Condor Public Services Building. Mr. Hogan?
So this item here is an invitation that we've received from Clearwater County is their ask their in sent the invite to council members to attend their tour, their new public services building and its grand opening, and that's being held on Thursday, February sixth or February fifth at seven PM in Condor. Council, recall, the central the central zone RMA meeting is the following day in Rocky Mountain House. So they're coinciding the two, as if anyone that's wanting to arrive early the night before can partake in the the grand opening of their public services building, which is a fire hall and administration center. So that is a decision of council. If you want to authorize authorize attendance for your for your membership, as per council policy, that's your your decision to make.
Thanks, Mr. Hogan. Hopefully, it warms up by February the fifth, seven PM. What's council's wishes or have any questions for Mr. Hogan? Councillor Christie?
I wouldn't mind going to Snoop, but I don't need to be supported doing that.
Councillor McGee?
I I'm a strong believer that all our council members should be available for whatever information they think is valuable and that cost should never be prohibiting them from experiencing those types of information opportunities. And so I'd like to say that I approve attendance to council members who wish to attend the Clearwater County New Public Service Building grand opening on Thursday, February fifth at seven PM.
Okay, thank you, Councillor McGee. The motion's been made to approve council attendance for those that can attend. I see RSVP should be completed by January the twentieth, so for those that choose to go, if you want to get a hold of staff and have them make sure that an RSVP is completed, that would be great. Is there any discussion to that motion? Councillor King?
I guess I'm kind of like Wade, you know, my curiosity is piqued by the opportunity, but I'm not sure that it's appropriate to to pay for my curiosity. So I guess that's I'm curious, but that's where I'll leave it.
I I think we'd be conspicuous by our absence if there wasn't one person went.
So you're volunteering.
Not sure, I thought we'd be closing one in Condor.
Okay, well, we have a motion here to approve attendance for the February the fifth. If there's no more discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, it is carried. We will move on to eight point eight, meeting opportunity with municipal affairs. Mr. Hogan?
Through you, Mr. Reeve. The the item that's before you is the standard invitation that we receive before each rural municipalities of Alberta convention. This one is from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. And as council's aware, this occurs before every convention, is different departments, whether that be municipal affairs, infrastructure, transportation, Soljan, whoever else, provide the opportunity for municipalities to meet with them, to discuss any concerns that they may have and that can't be addressed at the local level. They do send this out to to everybody, and then they do prioritize the requests that they get back. So they place different priorities on it, giving the giving opportunity, I think greater opportunity to municipalities that are further away from Edmonton, are further, you know, don't have, can't just bomb into Edmonton for for a meeting on short notice. So the distance they take into account, they also look at the items that the municipalities are wanting to discuss, wanting to make sure that if they if we do attend a meeting with municipal affairs, that the concerns we're bringing forward are ones that municipal affairs can actually deal with and that are within their portfolio. So they look at those those things, and administration is just inquiring if council has any desire to to attempt to meet to meet with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and if so, what items we may put on the agenda. If we're going to request a meeting, we do have to respond quite quickly. And so looking to see if there are any any large outstanding issues that that would require us to to sit down with the minister. At this point in time, there are none that administration is is specifically recommending.
But by the time March rolls around, there may be some concerns, maybe even with ICFs?
There there may be. You know, I know the in the well, well, the ICFs are a different discussion, but there
Any questions for Mr. Hogan? Like you've stated, I don't really see anything that's in the immediate horizon that we should be meeting with, but there very well may be. We have to have these get back to him fairly early here, so we would have to come up with some sort of a reason to meet.
Yeah, and if and so if there's if there's nothing, then we simply don't respond to the to the to the request. And that's, I guess, where if there aren't, if there isn't anything, then the motion we'd be looking for is that the council accept the invitation for information as presented.
It's council's wishes. Councillor McGee?
I move to accept the invitation for information.
Okay, if something does come up in the near future, we can revisit this again, so.
We we could revisit it, although our likelihood of getting a meeting would be would probably be would be much reduced.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we have a motion to accept the invitation for information as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Do we want to take a recess, or do we want to go back to seven point one? Let's have a short recess, and then we will come back.
Yes, Councillor King.
So I would make the motion to lift the table agenda item regarding the FCM at this time.
Okay, motion's been made to lift 7.1, council attendance at FCM. All those in favor? That is carried. Councillor, you go.
With the FCM, we did go through quite a bit on December 10th at our 2019 meeting. I'd just like to hear reiterated from each of the council members their reasoning why. I'm not saying that we should be out of FCM. I don't mind paying the $1,100. But the cost for us to go down there, I don't think council is being fiscally responsible with all of us going costing $30,000. And maybe we do have a seat at the table, but does anybody really listen to anything that comes from Alberta anyways? I can find pages of Earl's on all kinds of motions passed in other counties, determine which direction they're going without having to go down there and talk to people. I realize that there is an important aspect of talking to people, but we're getting their idea. We just want to see what different councils are doing. So do we really need to be down there in a face-to-face setting? And for the cost of it. You know, I think council has to start taking the lead on being fiscally responsible on some of the stuff. We've asked every department to cut, you know, to decrease what they're spending on, and yet council seems to be spending more and more money on ourselves all the time. I'd just like to hear each one of the council members reiterate their position on whether we should go or we shouldn't go.
Councillor Christie.
I guess I'll start. I feel it's very important, and I feel as much as the meetings and training is important, the dialogue between other councils from other parts of the country is extremely important. My French isn't very good, and I apologized when I sat with two French tables and they immediately spoke very good English. Without that dialogue, we have little or no representation of Western Canada and Eastern Canada, and I think it's important that we stay involved in this kind of stuff.
Councillor McGee.
As someone who's been in the workforce for years for various different types of dynamic social work and as also part of the education team in the education field for a while, all those professionals that I worked with are required to do professional development in some capacity or another annually. And I regard this as very similar. I also think this is very similar to people who are part of the canola growers association, the, all those types of different categories that we have for every kind of profession there is. And meeting on a large scale like that has been extremely beneficial to myself, and I can't imagine it not being beneficial to anyone who attends. I also think that our positioning there has created some changes already in how FCM is handling things and their task force that they have created because of the feedback they got from Alberta, I think is a very significant tool that will be making a difference to how we're approached nationally. And I think we need to stay strong at keeping our presence present so that we can be impactful.
Thank you, Councillor McGee. Okay, Councillor King.
I thought I'd leave the Reeve for the end, maybe.
Oh, no.
I guess I would agree with both Councillor Christie and Councillor McGee. If you've not attended one of these conventions, whether it's FCM or AUMA, or well, not AUMA anymore, it's RMA, or the other conventions that are available to us, and seen the information that's available, had opportunity to be in conversation with representatives both from Alberta but also nationally, you really don't get an understanding of what's available to you as a councillor. And so the training that I personally have received, the conversations that I've been in with councillors from other parts of Canada, you know, I think back to when we were in Halifax and just the conversation we had around fire and fire halls and the fire service and how they've amalgamated their volunteer, part-time, full-time, regional system into something that's working quite well for them. A lot of good information came out of those conversations that we had when we were there. I look at the oil and gas effort that was made at the last conference we were at and just the awareness that was raised by Western Canadian Albertans for the rest of Canada as it relates to the impacts of oil and gas on our economies and the world in which we live, which a lot of the rest of Canada is not really cognizant of. And I thought that the joint push that was made by the Alberta representatives was very, very effective. And as Councillor McGee has already pointed out, one of the things that came out of that is the, sort of that Western-focused lobby group, right, that FCM has put together. So for me personally, I think that it's important that we be at that table, that we represent Alberta well at the FCM. And there is value to Neale County that comes out of those meetings. So personally, I am a strong supporter of our participation in that. I know for myself personally and professionally, as Deputy Reeve McGee has already mentioned, I am required to take training on an annual basis. In fact, I have to account for it, and my professional status is dependent on me doing that. As a councillor, one of the things I think that we need to acknowledge and recognize is the fact that we need to be active not only within this council and at this council table, but provincially and federally as well, representing our ratepayers on those, at those levels as well. So I support our continued participation in FCM.
I agree that we should be at FCM, and I guess I still do hold that I don't know that we all need to go. But in the ones that I've attended, you could really rate them from 10 down to about a number one. There is some of them that haven't been a whole lot of good to us. And I live in fear of if we did drop down to only a few of us attending, how would you like to write the written report about what you learned at FCM? That would be a tough one, and I wouldn't want to be in that position. You know, I mean, and like I say, some of them have been very good. Probably the best one was the one in Edmonton when I phoned home and my wife had won the lottery. But I can honestly say that the FCM part of that one, I didn't learn too much at. The same with in Saskatoon, you know, I mean, the facilities were very poor in Saskatoon. It didn't make it for an enjoyable experience. So yes, I, you know, I mean, there is, if we were to drop back to sending only a few, I don't know how we decide how we do that. But yes, we should still be at FCM.
Okay, I guess it'll be my turn to weigh in. These conferences are important to us, to our ratepayers. They're information meetings, not only for us to gather information, but for us to share information. If we're not there to put our story forward, nobody's going to do it for us. I think there are breakout sessions that really do not apply to us, but there are a lot of breakout sessions that do apply to us. And the fire one, for instance, was a very good one. I think it's important that we attend. FCM has actually started that West, and I can't remember the acronym for it, but because of what Alberta brings forward with its 400 and some representatives, they were forced to make Western Canada known. And yeah, you do sit down with people from throughout the country, and you can put your story forward. You can ask them questions, they can ask you questions. And in the end, whether or not you make friends or not, you have put your position forward, and they've put their position forward. And sometimes it actually works. They see your side of it. So for us to say, no, we're not going to attend, I think that would be a huge mistake. And I'll leave it at that. Councillor McGee.
I just want to also add that I don't know if people are aware. It sounds like it's such a great idea for all of us to go there because we're, you know, we're on airplane, we're going to somewhere, and we're there for a few days. But the reality is, I work hard there, and I'm tired when I get back. And so I hope that when we make this decision, we're talking about whether or not we invest the hard work and time it takes to be the best representatives we can be. And that's what those breakout sessions for, that's what some of the keynote speakers are for, is for us to become really good councillors. That's the point of being there. And I believe my residents deserves the best of me, and I believe being there has made me a better councillor for them. You can't put a money price to that, but I do know that I'm representing county better because I have been to those things.
Well, I guess we've heard from, I've heard from council on the direction they'd like to go. Make a motion that, I'd like a recorded vote on it, that we provide administration to continue on with FCM. I don't see any other recourse with the rest of the councillors. So I'll concede the majority rules, hopefully, well, if you guys decide to, but make a motion for administration to continue on with FCM the way it is.
Okay, motion's been made to proceed with policies that have been provided. Is there any discussion to that motion? Councillor, Mr. Hogan.
If I can make just one to, through you, Mr. Reeve, to Councillor Hugo. Right now, the motion is to move to direct administration to, and I guess we're writing it, continue planning for councillors to attend FCM. I'm wondering if the motion would be better served to move to direct council to continue, to continue or endorse the council's policies regarding FCM. Ultimately, these are your policies, it's your attendance. It would do the same thing, it's just directing it to council as opposed to administration? If that's agreeable to Councillor Hugo?
Yes, it is, with my consent.
Okay, we will wait for the motion to come up on screen. Is that the way you would like to see the motion read, Councillor Hugo?
Yes, it is.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, I will call the question. This will be a recorded vote. So do we hold our hands up higher or longer, or how do you want to work that?
Both hands.
Both hands? All right, I will call the question. Move to endorse council policies regarding FCM attendance. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we are 15 minutes away from public hearing. Let's go, let's go to 10.1, council and committee reports. Okay, council and committee reports, we have Community Futures, Wild Roads. Are there any questions? Seeing none, would somebody like to make the motion to accept our information? Councillor Christie.
I move that we accept the committee reports as presented.
Motion's been made to accept the report as presented. All those in favor? That is carried. We will now move on to council follow-up action list. Councillor Christie.
I guess one of my questions is where are we at with Wimborne Gas Station reclamation?
Through Mr. Reeve, Councillor Christie, I would need to follow up with administration to get an answer on that back to you.
And I guess I'll just follow up, just for my own curiosity. Are we accumulating some information and planning to readdress the Toshu housing at some point in the future?
We are. We do have, we do have a couple of ideas that we're exploring there. We do need to make contact with a couple of other parties that are related to that. There is another opportunity, might be the word, to address the issue as well through the province, so we're just doing a bit of research on that.
Thank you. I'd make the motion to receive the council action list as presented.
Okay, motion's been made to receive as presented. All those in favor? That is carried. And we are 10 minutes away from public hearings, so I will call a reset. I shall call for a motion to open bylaw 1806. Councillor King.
So moved.
Motion's been made to open bylaw 1806. All those in favor? That is carried. And that is carried. At this point in time, I will go through the procedures for the public hearing. If any person's interested in speaking for or against the proposed bylaw and haven't done so already, should register their names on the appropriate speakers list, so your names may be correctly recorded into the minutes. If you have not already done so, please see Jenna Kester in the lobby to register your name on this list. The use of audio and video recording devices and cameras by the press or the public is prohibited. At this point in time, I would like to introduce the council, starting from my far right.
Morning, Jim Hugo.
Glenn Keever.
Ken King.
Morning, Jerry Whitstock.
Fay McGee.
Wade Christie.
And also seated with counsel is Mr. Mike Hogan, our C Chief Administrative Officer. I will now outline the meeting process. Individuals speaking for or against the proposed bylaw today will be allowed five minutes to speak. A spokesman speaking on behalf of a group petition may speak for a maximum of ten minutes. We have a time clock, and that'll be displayed on the screen above. At two minutes, it'll turn yellow; at one minute, it'll turn red; and when the clock hits zero, there'll be a five-second warning that your speaking time is complete. All questions to counsel will be directed to myself as chairman, and I will direct the question to the person best suited to answer. No questions will be taken from the gallery; no debate will be allowed. When presenting, speakers shall state their name and address. If you have already submitted a letter on or before the advertised deadline, you may only address counsel at this hearing on new information not contained in your letter. Any person who would like to present using electronic presentation will bring their USB flash drive to the presenter's desk, where a staff member will open the file at the presenter's laptop. The order of presentations to be made to counsel today will be: Firstly, administrations shall present an overview and summary regarding the proposed bylaw. The applicant shall state their name and present their application within a time period of twenty minutes. Third, member of council can ask questions of clarification to the applicant. Fourth, the chair shall open the floor to presentations from the public who are in favor of the proposed bylaw. The order for these presentations will be in the following order. Administration will come forward and read the written submissions. Individuals will be called in the order as they appear on the individual speakers list. Group speakers will be called in the order as they appear on the group speakers list. Fifth, the chair shall open the floor to presentations from the public who are in opposition to the proposed bylaw. The order of these presentations will be in the following order. Administration will come forward and read the written submissions. Individuals will be called in the order as they appear on the individual speakers list. Group speakers will be called in the order as they appear on the group speakers list. Council members are allowed to ask questions of clarification to the individuals group speaking to the proposed bylaw. Sixth, after hearing from those persons on the speakers list in support or in opposition, I will ask if anyone else present wishes to speak in support or in opposition of the proposed bylaw. Seventh, the applicant will get a chance for rebuttal, which will be no longer than ten minutes. And eighth, allow questions for clarifications from council members to the applicant. I do not have a list of speakers here, is there? There we go, thank you. I will now ask our Planning and Development Department to come forward to make their presentation. Welcome, Barb.
Good morning. Put that over to me.
At any time you're ready, sorry.
Okay, perfect, thank you. We're gonna have an opportunity here to go through a little bit of the intermunicipal development plan that's proposed for Wheatland and Neahill County. Some of the housekeeping I have to do is we have done our notifications, actually we've exceeded, we are required to notify two consecutive weeks, we've done four. And then, everyone was notified in the plan area by mail, so they got their own notification following the December, or November twenty-sixth council meeting where we set first reading in the public hearing. So that was all done. And again, originally in the Municipal Government Act, you were aware that every municipality that bordered each other was required to do intermunicipal development plan between them. That has now been amended under Bill twenty-five, which came into force December fifth, twenty nineteen, so very new. It replaces the current wording of that section in the Municipal Government Act to allow municipalities to mutually agree that an intermunicipal development plan is not necessary to not complete one. So I'm just letting you know that the musts that have been, we've had in place for a couple years have been amended, so that there is some flexibility there for that portion. Intermunicipal development plans are a statutory document, they are adopted by bylaw in accordance with Section six thirty-one of the Municipal Government Act, and it's used as a long-range planning tool. They do not have the specificity of a land use bylaw or an area structure plan, they are very high-level documents. In the Municipal Government Act, again, they listed a whole bunch of things, criteria that had to be addressed within this IDP. And again, we've gone through this many times, as we've had several of these on the table. And so, it's really about future land use development, transportation, servicing, all those things that can happen. And then there is a portion that's about conflict resolution, and that's, all the plans have to be able to address how you're gonna deal with conflict in those plan areas. And Bill twenty-five does have some amendments in this area as well, so they don't change the issues that are required to be addressed through an IDP, but they do propose an addition that allows municipalities to omit one or more of the required issues if the matter is dealt with through the ICF. And so, again, there's a little bit of flexibility there, so you don't have to reiterate twice, you're not opening two documents if you ever amend one. It does create a little bit more flexibility for municipality dealing with these things, so just keep that in the back of your mind. In this one in particular, this is what's listed as the mutual benefits, this document, we don't have goals or objectives as we do in most of our others, so we do have mutual benefits. So municipal cost-saving, as a result of infrastructure and service sharing, which also provides residents, or may provide residents with a higher quality of life. It reinforces and protects both municipalities' development philosophies and goals while mitigating the potential for future intermunicipal conflict. And it ensures development for both municipalities occurs in an orderly, economic, efficient, and harmonious manner that is sustainable by considering existing development conditions and future municipal goals. That piece itself is out of the Municipal Government Act. The plan area itself is approximately one mile on either side of the border. We are looking at nineteen, just over nineteen thousand hectares, forty-eight thousand acres. Agriculture is the primary land use. We do have an exhamlet that falls within the plan area, and that's Bainen. There are several highways, the majority of the west side and, or the south, there is all Highway nine is what splits the two municipalities, so that highway cuts across the majority of the plan area. But there are some other ones, Highway twenty-one, eight thirty-six, and eight forty-one are some transportation corridors that butt up into that plan area, and there are seventeen shared range roads. There is a CN Calgary drum line that defines a portion of the border, and that would be in the southeast, and then the Rosebud River Valley defines also a portion in the east side of the plan area, and that contains some hazard lands, some environmental and some historic lands. The plan area has very limited residential development to date. There are numerous well sites and pipelines that fall within the plan area. There are some land use designations shown on map seven, and we'll go through those maps one at a time, and they're provided as a point-of-time capture for information purposes only, and they are subject to change without amendment to the plan. So you don't have to go back to the intermunicipal development plan and redo anything when there's a redesignation or subdivision or development. Just to note, South Saskatchewan Regional Plan is on the Wheatland side. Our regional plan is not in place yet, but likely the process has started, or they will be starting at some point. So that does apply to their side, and they also have a bit of a growth board in Wheatland County, however, it's outside of the plan area. So whether or not they have to weigh in on the plan, I'm not entirely sure how that happens on their end. There are two large conservation easements on private land that portions of do fall in the plan area, and I just wanna make you aware, caveats on private land are something that we always consider when it comes to a process, so a development subdivision, redesignation process, they're not something that we put into our documents, but they are always part of a process that we consider. There is another plan in the area, the Badlands Motorsport Resort Area Structure Plan, it was initially approved in twenty thirteen. The Direct Control District was approved in twenty fourteen and amended in twenty fifteen by the Municipal Government Board. This area structure plan does include recreational, commercial, and some residential components. The area structure policies apply exclusively to the lands that fall within the Badlands Motorsport Resort Area Structure Plan boundary. The IDP is a high-level planning document that sits above the area structure plan, however, the area structure plan is an approved statutory plan that has gone through the required public process, so it still applies to this, these lands, and that is noted throughout the intermunicipal development plan. General policies that we see in this plan, current primary land use is agricultural. Non-agricultural development shall be aligned with each municipality's municipal development plan, it is encouraged to be located along highways and identified growth centers. Some of the policies encourage effective dialogue when considering land use while maintaining complete jurisdiction. May collaborate and investigate methods of giving support to projects that may mutually benefit or enhance the quality of life for residents from both municipalities, and we agree to jointly discuss ways to cooperate with provincial and federal agencies and utility providers to help facilitate efficient delivery of infrastructure and services that are mutually beneficial. Some of the key policies by areas under agriculture, it is the primary use. We are to encourage good neighbor farming practices, dust weed, insect control, et cetera, and complaints will be forwarded to the appropriate agency. The Agricultural Operations Practices Act is the right-to-farm legislation, so really when we're talking about the good neighbor, it's if developments are cited, they, and we do this all across the county, not just in our intermunicipal development plans, they are protected to be able to farm in the manner which they've been farming, and so a development can't come in and change your farming practices. So, under that legislation, they are able to do some of that. When it comes to resource extraction and energy development, and I'm largely gonna address resource extraction, we don't require development permits for energy, they are provincial agency that deals with those, but if there is a discretionary use development permit, it will be forwarded to the other municipality for comment. Adjacent municipality must be notified if access comes from a road under its control, and a road use agreement may be required from either municipality, so if there's hauling to take place that crosses some of the range roads, then either municipality can request a haul, or a road use agreement. When it comes to the renewable energy, again, the policies in the plan say municipalities will encourage the location of renewable energy within the plan area where it's compatible with existing land uses and in consideration of comments from the adjacent municipality. Anything that's small scale that doesn't require development permit or is a permitted use, they don't require referral, so we are only talking about discretionary use subdivisions and rezonings that happen within the plan area, so otherwise the permitted uses are just handled as normal business on both sides. When it comes to transportation, each municipality will be notified of any subdivision or development that will result in access being required from a road under its control. When it comes to road closures, development of undeveloped roads, again, we're notifying the adjacent municipality if it could impact by increasing or decreasing traffic one way or the other, and so we do do those notifications, and we're required to do those anyway. Road use agreements may be required by either municipality, again, we talked about that already, and if a traffic impact assessment is required by our Alberta Transportation, it will be at the sole cost of the developer. When it comes to recreation, both municipalities may consult with other agencies to develop management plans, which integrate land use, development, and recreational activities. Policies within existing adopted area structure plans will continue to apply within the plan area, so Badlands Motorsport Resort. And again, it would happen if there was another area structure plan that happened, again, those are very specific land policies, just to specific lands, this is a much more overarching plan that, that deals with a lot more land than, than the specific area structure plans would. When it comes to environment, utilize and incorporate measures which minimize possible impacts on the Rosebud River and any other important water sources. Determine appropriate land use patterns in the vicinity to significant water resources. Establish appropriate setbacks and additional reports that may be required for proposed developments, and we do this in and outside of the intermunicipal development plan. If somebody's wanting to develop in those hazard lands, they are always going to have to do some geotechnical or some of the other stuff, and then if there's historical or paleontological, they have to go through Alberta culture and tourism to get their conditional approval through them. So those are things we do even outside of the plan area. Development on slopes and river valleys is generally discouraged, and again, we were just talking a little bit about this, however, where development is proposed on these natural features, it will proceed only in accordance with the respective municipality's statutory plans, applicable bylaws, and other municipal policies and regulations. And again, they do have to go through a lot more hoops if they wanna be close to a brink or those types of things, and that doesn't matter where they are in the county, whether it's in the plan area or not, we require more information in those lands. Policies within the existing area structure plan will continue to apply to the subject lands, again, within those, within that specific plan area. So this gives you a snapshot, as you can see the long flat line that goes through the plan area, that's all Highway nine, so we have that that splits the counties there, and then on that southeast side, we have the rail and Rosebud. The soil classifications are included in the plan area, so you will see fairly high levels of soil throughout the Highway nine corridor area, but then when you get into the, the more coolie lands, the soil quality declines significantly. Historical resources, and again, they are, they are noted between one and five, one is the highest level, most protected for, and those are provincial historic resources. They're noted as green, they look kinda blue on this picture for some reason, I don't know why. But you will see that where the yellow is, is the majority of the colored land, and that is lands that have a high potential, there's maybe nothing noted on those lands, but you do have to look if you're gonna do something there. The oil activity in the area, again, we're very strong in pipeline and oil field activity, so in the plan area is no different, and you will see there's a lot of that happening. Okay, when it comes to the committee, what I have done in here, there's some things that are very different from all of our IDPs, so I've highlighted those in red, and I will bring them up just so that you're aware that this one is unique, and so you'll be able to determine where you wanna go. So, the committee is made up of an even number of members of council from both municipalities, and it may include an alternate, they are appointed at the organizational meeting. There is a formal review on this one every ten years, all of our other ones are every four years, and typically we follow the election cycle to review them, so this one is a little bit longer. At least one municipal, member of each municipality's administrative staff should attend each meeting, and that's basically just capacity of technical non-voting advisor. And the meetings are called on an as-needed basis with five days' notice. The functions of the committee are really a dialogue on issues of common interest or concern, they address concerns of policies of the plan and proposed amendments. Where this one is very different is, the committee has been set up to address redesignation applications, changes to land use districts or other land use amendments affecting the plan area. The addressing of issues in relation to the implementation of plan policies, again, is very similar to our other ones. The committee providing comments related to subdivision and/or development proposals is different, we don't have that in any of the other ones. Again, a function, a typical function of the committee is to engage in resolving conflicts or disputes, and we will see that when we get to the dispute resolution. Both municipalities equally share in the costs associated with using outside assistance to resolve that dispute. They, again, address any other land use issues that are deemed appropriate but which are not explicitly identified in the plan. Both councils agree the committee is not a decision-making body, but in this case, this one goes further, and again, this is different than all of the rest of ours, that the committee shall issue a written response in the form of comments and/or recommendations to the appropriate and relevant decision-making body within ten business days from the committee meeting date. Comments to be considered prior to rendering a decision. So what you've seen highlighted in red is unique, and so, just so that you're aware, this is different than the other intermunicipal development plans we have. The dispute resolution process is pretty similar, it's CAO to CAO as the first attempt, and then the committee is the second attempt to resolve, then council to council, and if that doesn't resolve, then it goes to mediation, and the municipal government board, if the bylaw is adopted by one, then the other municipality can oppose to that board. This one has been an ongoing process, we've met more times with this one, and we've had a lot of changing players throughout. We've met more times with this one, and we've had a lot of changing players throughout the process to date. And so we've started over a few times. But our first meeting started in 2016, in August of 2016, and as you can see, we've had several, and we've met throughout the years. We did have an open house, March 27th, 2019, and then the committee came back and met July 19th, 2019, and they did do some amendments and revised the document a bit at that point. And that's the draft that you have before you today. So two members from each council, along with the CAOs from each municipality, were appointed to the committee, so that committee is in place. The review of the documents were completed and some amendments were made. Wheatland County had their public hearing December 17th, and it was recessed. Ours is now being held today. We're recommending just a committee meeting be scheduled as per Wheatland's request to consider amendments to the draft, and then council will consider second and third readings at subsequent council meetings. And then those readings create the adoption of the bylaw. We do always have a deadline. Our deadline was January 10th at noon for written submissions to come in the door prior to that deadline. We had nothing. And agency comments have come in, those have been attached to your package for your reference to go through. Following the deadline, however, we did get written submissions. We received several emails in support of Wendy Clark's submission. We have done a short addendum that you have in front of you of those, but we did cut it off at 3:00, 3:00 PM yesterday, so we could get stuff. We did not have them in time to get them into the public packages. So we did cut it off. So anything that came in after 3:00, you don't have in front of you. So I just thought I would make you aware of that. And I, yep, that's the end.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Does council have any questions for the planner? Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go through this the way it's written here, so I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward to make your presentation, which you already have. Obviously, there's no questions for the applicant. I will now ask administration to come forward to read the written submissions in favor. From what I see, there were none. I will now call on individuals in the order they appear on the individual speakers list in favor of the bylaw to come forward to make your presentation. I remind you, you have five minutes to speak. And there are none on my sheet here. I will now call on individuals speaking as a group in order of the appearance on the group speakers in favor of the bylaw list to come forward, and I don't see any here. I will now call on administration to come forward to read the written submissions that are in opposition to the bylaw, and there were none.
Nope.
I will now call on individuals in order that they appear on the individual speakers list in opposition to come forward and make your presentation, and there are none. And now I will call on individuals in the order that they appear on the group list in opposition of the bylaw to come forward to make your presentation, and I do have one name, Ms. Wendy Clark. So if you'd like to step ahead and make your presentation, now is the time.
I like this little desk. It's very nice. Thank you.
Okay, and anytime you're ready, Wendy. This is a public hearing to deal with the joint IDP, and I'd like to keep the comments specific to that joint IDP.
Yes.
That would be great.
We will, we will do that. Good morning, brief, council members, administration, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Wendy Clark, and my husband, Richard, and I are landowners in both Neehill and Wheatland County. Our land in Wheatland falls within the IDP area, and our land in Neehill is right on the edge. I'm a little nervous because I count 56 people who have said that they, that I'm speaking for them, and that seems to me to be a kind of a huge responsibility. However, when I saw that it was going to be so cold, I said to people, "Don't come." So I hope you don't consider that a reflection that this chamber isn't full of people, because they would have come. But I, I said, "This, I, I will do my best to do it for you." Okay, I want to thank each and every one of you counselors and the administration at Neehill County for your attendance, your tremendous attendance at the IDP Open House in Carbon. It was a huge deal to the people of the Rosebud area that you did that and that you came out. I hope you won't feel reluctant in the future to have open dialogue with the people of Rosebud. We're actually pretty, pretty nice people, and not that hard to get along with. The purpose of the IDP is to foster collaborative planning approach for lands along the common border between the two counties. So quite simply, let's talk openly and honesty, honestly, about changes to land management, especially when they affect our neighbors. It seems simple, but we need a whole document to tell us how to do it. I would suggest one of the most important aspects of land use decisions along our borders is what the neighbors in either county are concerned about. Every landowner should be entitled to the continued quiet enjoyment of their property, and every resident should be regarded as an important part of the decision-making process. I was supposed to have that up before. Okay, I'll give you this beautiful slide of the Rosebud River Valley. For the whole of Section 3 on policies, I had a big list of suggestions, but I, I went and spent some time with Barb and with the planners in Wheatland County, and they set me straight and said, "Yeah, no, you, you can't change those. Those, those aren't changeable, so I'm not going to bother you with them," although I thought they were kind of a good list. Even so, I'm not actually opposed to this plan. I didn't know where to put my name. I believe it meets its purpose with a few amendments. I'm going to get through, I, I have five amendments. It's going to take me just a minute. It might take me over my time, and I guess, Mr. Chair, you, you can cut me off. I, I hope you won't. I'll reduce some parts to make it a little tighter, the timeline. While my, much of my emphasis is on the, is on the Rosebud River watershed, neighbors all along the IDP area have expressed their concern. They see Neehill growth areas for industrial, industrial around the Horseshoe Canyon and for highway commercial all along Highway Nine. This IDP should sure, ensure no one is left with their property impacted adversely by the neighboring county. Okay. So first, some housekeeping in the description in the IDP area. On page 19 of the IDP, if you look at the description of the natural landscape, we would like to add a fourth one. Rick Skipstead, that's S-K-I-B-S-T-E-D, would like to volunteer to explain that to you.
Okay, I'm Rick Skipstead, and I, I have land on both sides of the, both counties, and I also have lands all along that IDP on the Rosebud River Valley. And I've always thought that the Rosebud River Valley was in need of environmental protection, and for many years, I sought this on my own land. Six years ago, along with the silent majority in our area, we started down that road, and I think I can say grassroots Albertans should not be silent. They should stand up for what they believe in and support governments that work for and in, in the interests of the people they serve. Early December, Richard and Wendy Clark and Linda and myself signed a conservation easement with Western Sky Land Trust. We are very excited, and indeed, I think the county and the council should be, both counties, and this council should be excited as well. We are honored to announce that we have protected over 4,000 acres in the Rosewood River Valley watershed forever, and it's in both counties, and it's all in the IDP. We will continue to manage and work our lands as our families have done for over a century, always striving to be better stewards. We will continue to grow our crops, graze our grass sustainably, and always use, and always view the health of the river valley foremost in our minds. We will not subdivide or commercially develop our property. This is our promise to our neighbors and our community. We recognize that this, that what happens in our lands also affects their lives as well, and we recognize the critical importance of the river valley as a wildlife sanctuary on a predominantly cultivated landscape. We would like to thank the folks at Western Sky Land Trust. They were so enthusiastic when I first contacted them. They recognized almost immediately that the Rosewood River Valley was a very special place, and we are actually a bit humbled by the opportunity they have given us. A wise young man once suggested to us, "If you don't look after the planning, eventually someone will look after it for you." Last week, we used the best tool we have, a conservation easement that will look after these lands for many generations to come. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. So I would like you to consider adding another item on that description. Whoops, now I'm hitting the wrong button. That was, this is the conservation lands we're talking about. And I want, I would like you to consider adding the portions of the Rosebud River watershed, including 4,000 acres protected by conservation easement agreements between Western Sky Land Trust and the landowners. Western Sky was planning to be in attendance also today, but I, again, I suggested to them, with the frigid temperatures, the long drive was probably not a great idea. Okay, now, I need just a moment to talk about the racetrack ASP that is mentioned in this document. My examples through this presentation will be about that process, because that's the one I know. One, I believe this IDP could have improved. Now, we believe... We believe the area structure plan in the Direct Control District would fragment the Rosebud River Valley at its core. 1,800 people and 400 high-powered cars and motorcycles daily, 100 of them on the tracks at the same time, sunup to sundown, 50 weeks of the year. It would put the river itself at risk, impact habitat for a dozen special status species, destroy rarefied native fescue grassland, and disrupt wildlife corridors. This is not who Albertans are. We struggle with foreign-funded environmental forces against projects necessary on a national scale. To be credible, we must demonstrate we know how to protect our own lands. We must guide high-impact projects that can be else, built elsewhere away from our most precious landscapes. Now proceeding to the amendments I'm proposing, I would like to suggest we remove on page 22, Section 3.1.6, which states the area structure plan for the racetrack should take precedence over the IDP. This statement must mean there are no discrepancies. Now, Barb talked about the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, and when it was introduced, Wheatland County went through a process of auditing all their bylaws, including planning bylaws, to be sure they complied with the, with the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan. The Red Deer Regional Plan will eventually emphasize the same protection for river valleys, and Neehill County will be required to pass the same requisite audits to comply. Any, if any further approvals should be requested for the racetrack, and I say that as a real if, because I don't want to waste a whole bunch of people's time on something that's... Sorry.
That's five-second, yep.
Would you like me to quit? I've got five suggested amendments. It's not very long.
Okay, if you can go through those five very quickly, that would be great.
Now, where was I? Okay. If it, if there are any further requested approvals, Neehill County might as well get on board and audit the area structure plan for compliance with both the IDP and the SSRP to cover the audit required for the future Red Deer Regional Plan. Both counties might as well know now what the non-compliance issues are. This is a shared river valley, and impacts are shared. Number two, for the amendments. The IDP committee should have discretion to ask for more information about any development in the IDP area. This may be in the form of additional information, reports not yet provided, or in the form of third-party reviews. The deciding council and the public should have the pertinent information required at the appropriate step in the process sooner than later. Now, third-party reviews have been requested by both counties in the past, and were approvals to continue for a racetrack, it is imperative the committee meet and have the option to ask for third-party review of the noise impact assessment and environmental impact assessment. Remember, 85% of residents affected by this area structure plan are in Wheatland County. The provider of the noise impact assessment disavowed itself of the client-supplied source sound pressure levels on which the entire report and its conclusions depend. Garbage in, garbage out. The environmental impact assessment did not, for example, use the Alberta SETPACs for species at risk. It used Manitoba's instead. Third amendment, notification of the county for any development in the IDP area is critical. Now, in Section 4.2 in the referral process, it looks like notification is required for everything, but not quite. The IDP should state that subdivision and discretionary development permit applications should be referred to the other county, including within an area structure plan. Now, for example, in 2017, the racetrack subdivision was not circulated to Wheatland County. I'm forgetting to go forward here. Our group alerted Wheatland to the item on Neehill Council agenda. Wheatland then had the opportunity to advise Neehill that critical language from the prior MGB 690 dispute had been left out. Neehill delayed and added the appropriate language. This IDP has one area structure plan. In the future, it should not be used to hide development. The purpose of the IDP is to foster awareness and cooperation. While Section 653 of the MGA does not require notification within, in an ASP, in an IDP area, we can do better. Number four, the IDP committee must be allowed a reasonable timeline to do its work. I understand county planners are under time constraints at some stages of the process. When applicants originally make inquiries within an IDP area, they should be notified that the speed of the process depends on their proactive communication with both counties and residents of both counties. In other words, if their homework is done, they will know what both counties will require from them. If not, extensions beyond 21 days may be required when the IDP committee requests information and has complex issues to deal with. Number five, the composition of the IDB committee is not fully decided. Am I out here? For the IDP area in the Rosebud River Valley, I would suggest a member of the public with some knowledge of the environmental issues in the valley would be valuable for compound, comment, like you have on the MPC. Given the state now held by Western Sky Land Trust, possibly they or a similar organization could be approached to bring a person forward. Otherwise, the Rosebud community has knowledgeable persons dedicated to protecting the valley. Wheatland County also has an environmental coordinator on staff. Both, perhaps both counties could benefit from the expertise of the person in that position when considering the Rosebud River Valley. So here's a summary of my suggested amendments. After saying all this, I recognize that each county has the power to make the decisions in their own county. I, I only want to bring forward that the committee have plenty of opportunity to have good thorough discussions on everything in the IDP area. That's all I have, and thank you very much for listening, and thanks, Jerry, for giving me a little extra time.
Yes, thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Rick. Does council have any questions for the speakers? Does council have any questions for the speakers?
Counselor Keever, do you have a map showing the Western Sky Land Trust conservation area in relationship to Badlands Motorsports Development?
I, I can show you that.
Do you have a map of that?
Yes.
It was actually out there for a bit.
Yeah, well, it was, because I blew it and didn't put the slide up at the right time, you didn't get to see it long enough, so you could see it. Okay, I will just go back to it. How do I go back?
Your arrows.
Arrows, perfect, thank you. Okay, so you see that area there, you can see the Rosebud River Valley in the very bottom part, okay, but right in the corner, is there a way I can point on there for you?
You need a laser pointer.
I don't have my laser pointer. Okay, so the, the southeast corner, where you see the green line, that is, is where the Badlands area is. And what...
Can I give you the hand card?
Yeah, so what we have done is, our easement, our easement covers the, all the land surrounding that on top. Now, I might add that Rick didn't mention is, we're very hopeful that we're going to, there's going to be several other neighbors who will also be signing onto conservation easements in the next...
Well, there's some already underway.
There's some already underway. So, um, yeah, and, and, you know, another thing about this easement that you might like to know is that it was actually designated as a federal ecological gift. It's a designation that's actually very difficult to get, and it's also a designation where I don't think, in the past, they have recognized how important cultivated land is, and how important cultivated land is to the watershed. And that is why we're feeling very fortunate that they included the cultivated land as well. We continue to farm, as we always have. We continue to own our land. It's all the same, but they're just recognizing that farmers are actually doing a good job of farming, and doing a good job, all the, we're nothing special. We're not doing anything that all the other farmers in this county are not doing. And I think it's really great that we have that recognition that, that farmers actually are sustainably taking care of their land.
You've got the answer to your question, Glenn?
Yeah, I think I wondered.
Alrighty. Are there any other questions for the presenters? Counselor Hugo.
Ms. Wendy, could you possibly extrapolate who is Western Sky Land Trust? I understand, like with Ducks Unlimited, what they can do, but I don't know really anything about Western Sky Land Trust.
Okay. Western Sky, do you understand what a land trust is? Okay, so Western Sky is, I guess what you would say, they're like nature's conservancy, except they're smaller, they're, they're, the lands that they're trying to protect are, they're focusing in southern Alberta, mainly, and the watershed areas. So, what their mandate is, is to conserve property, and they have a board of directors, they're a charitable organization. I wish that Western Sky was here. You know what I would like to suggest? I know Western Sky would be very happy to come and talk to council, if you would be willing to take the time. I, I think you'd be very interested in what they have to say, and with so many of these wonderful areas in Neheal County, it's a wonderful tool for landowners to, to, to preserve the legacy of their land.
If I can say something, you're familiar with Ducks Unlimited, did you know Jerry Brunin at all?
Yes.
He started Western Sky, but of course, you know, he's passed away, he passed away about a year ago, two years ago maybe. So he started us down this road. He's the first guy I talked to with Western Sky. He was very enthusiastic, unbelievably. I think he got back to us within about 15 minutes of me sending him an email. And land trusts is something I've looked at for so many years, probably 30 or 40 years, and back in the day, when I first started looking at it, they weren't near as flexible as they are now. And so when I approached them the second go-around, I was really quite surprised at what, how flexible land trusts are, so it's always been my dream to, to put my land in a land trust, and I'm really happy that there's going to be a lot more down the valley, so...
And Rick is kind of our hero, because he has made us all enthusiastic about this, and it's, the truth is, it's been really, really pretty satisfying to, to feel really good about how your land will be in the future.
Okay, you've got the answer you're looking for, Counselor Hugo?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are there any other questions for the presenters? Doesn't look like it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your patience. I'm sorry, I seem to be fumbling around.
Okay, I will now ask one final time if there's anyone else present who wishes to speak in support or opposition of the proposed bylaw. And I don't see anyone. I'll let you...
It's still up. That's the problem, it's still open. Oh, that's you. Oh, sorry. I can get it from you later if you will. I'll just, I guess...
Sorry about that.
Alrighty, does the applicant wish to offer rebuttal? Nope. I don't have to remind you, you only got 10 minutes, though.
Oh, I can take it.
Yeah? Does, does council have any questions for the applicant, which would be our planner? Well, I guess you're off the hook too, Barb. Okay, I now declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to go back into regular council meeting. Counselor Christie?
So moved.
Motion's been made to go back into regular council meeting. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, and I will call a recess at this point in time, so fill your coffee cups and I'll start up here again after the recess.
On our agenda is 9.0 Disposition of Delegate and Public Hearing Business. Mike, I'll let you take it.
So the item in question is regarding the Wheatland-Nehill IDP that council just had the public hearing for. Council has several options related to this. You can choose to give it second reading. You could choose to give it second and third reading. You could do neither of those and choose to refer it back to the committee at this point. We'll alert council to the fact that Wheatland County has requested that we have another committee meeting. I believe administratively that's our recommendation around that is that we hold off on second and third reading today. And this suggests that council direct us as administration to arrange a meeting with Wheatland County regarding the IDP.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Hogan. What's council's wishes? Administratively, there are some changes that we would like to see.
There are some that we could point out there. Maybe I'll refer to Ms. Hazleton around those.
Okay. Nothing huge, though.
It's for the functions of the committee, I think.
Okay. All righty, Counselor King.
Okay, then I would make the motion that council postpone second and third reading of bylaw 1806 until the Nehill County-Wheatland County IDP committee has an opportunity to meet.
Thank you.
Sound reasonable? That's the intent of what you're after?
Yep. Okay, I'll wait for that motion to come up on screen. Okay, it is there. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, that takes care of nine. We have a couple items for closed session. Illegal Section 24 and an intergovernmental relation, Section 21. Would someone like to make a motion to put us into closed session? Counselor McGee.
I move to go into closed session.
Motion's been made to move into closed session. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously, and I will wait for the camera.
On our agenda is 9.0 Disposition of Delegate and Public Hearing Business. Mike, I'll let you take it.
So the item, the item in question is regarding the Wheatland-Nehal IDP that council just had the public hearing for. Council has several options related to this. Is you can choose to give it second reading, you could choose to give it second and third reading, you could do neither of those and choose to refer it back to the committee at this point. We'll alert council to the fact that Wheatland County has requested that we have another committee meeting. I believe administratively, that's our recommendation around that, is that we hold off on second and third reading today and suggests that council direct us as administration to arrange a meeting with Wheatland County regarding the IDP.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Hogan. What's council's wishes? Administratively, there are some changes that we would like to see?
There are some that, that we could point out there. Maybe I'll refer to Ms. Zizzleton around, around those.
Okay. Nothing huge, though.
Oh, are you lying? It's for the functions of the committee, I think.
Okay.
That he does a lot of fun to address.
All righty. Counselor King.
Okay, then I would make the motion that council postpone second and third reading of bylaw 1806 until the Nehal County/Wheatland County IDP committee has an opportunity to meet.
Thank you.
Sound reasonable? That's what, that's the intent of what you're after?
Yep. Okay, I'll wait for that motion to come up on screen. Okay, it is there. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, that takes care of nine. We have a couple items for closed session. Illegal, section 24, and an intergovernmental relation, section 21. Would someone like to make a motion to put us into closed session? Counselor McGee.
I move to go into closed session.
Motion's been made to move into closed session. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously and I will wait for the camera.
You gonna hurt them all back in there, Bullen?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's gone to look for tree stoles.
Yeah.
I forgot to put poker face today.
There's a lot.
They're all there?
They're coming.
They're coming?
No.
Your invisible friends?
Yeah.
This bum said he should over there.
Okay, so we are back in session. We have some motions to make. Anybody prepared? Counselor King?
I would make the motion that council authorize the Reeve and the CIO to sign the agreement for purchase and sale in addition to the restrictive covenant agreement for the purchase of the parcel of land and improvements located at southeast 152822 west of the fourth.
Thank you. Motion's been made to authorize to sign the purchase. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Counselor Christie?
I make a motion to transfer 150,000 for the purchase of the property located at southeast of 152822 west of the fourth to come from the contingency reserve.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made to transfer the 150 for the purchase of the property. Is there any discussion to said motion? Seeing as none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Counselor McGee?
I move that we move the funds realized from the sale of surplus equipment located on the property located as listed to be transferred to the building reserve.
Okay, motion's been made as presented. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. That brings us to the end of our agenda, and I will...